Right here. So this is Wednesday, July 15th, 2020. And before I call the meeting to order, just my preliminary comments that it is true, we are still in a period of COVID-19 pandemic and the governor has extended the emergency order. So Met Council is going to continue to hold our meetings virtually. And we're doing that under Minnesota statutes, section 13D, point 021. And we are not actually inviting public comment due to the limitations of our technology, but we encourage those members of the public listening or watching that if they have comments or questions to use our public email line, which is public.info@metc.state.mn.us. That's on the agenda. So feel free to use it. We'll get back to you in a timely manner. I remind council members when you're making a comments to kind of give your name so that those who are listening in kind of know who's talking. So we are going to use the roll call again. And to establish a quorum, I believe by looking at the screen, I think we do have a quorum. But Liz, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson?
Here.
Barber?
Here.
Chambliss?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Fredson? Fredson?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Okay, I'm here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Lilligrin? Lilligrin? Lindstrom?
Here.
Musse? Musse? Sterner? Bento?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Zaren?
Present.
Chair Zelli?
I'm here. Anybody else who didn't get called? I know councilmember Lilligrin is here. There might be a few others who didn't get named. But we have a quorum. All right. The first now actually approval of the agenda. So first order of business is the approval. Is there a motion and a second for the agenda?
Cummings moves approval.
Thank you, Molly.
Atlas Ingabretson seconds.
Thank you, Lanaya. Any discussion? Hearing none. Liz?
Atlas Ingabretson?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Chambliss?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Fredson?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lilligrin? Lilligrin? Lindstrom?
Aye.
Musse? Sterner? Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zaren?
Aye.
Chair Zelli?
Aye. So that motion is adopted. The next item is approval of the minutes of our July 1st, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move by Lee.
Second by Zaren.
Thank you, councilmembers. Any discussion? Hearing none. Liz, call the roll.
Atlas Ingabretson?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Chambliss?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Fredson? Fredson?
Aye.
Thank you. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lilligrin?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Musse? Sterner? Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zaren?
Aye.
Chair Zelli?
Aye. All right. The minutes are adopted. Onto our main event. Actually, it's the only event. It's a discussion on the agenda today. More thorough discussion, not a new topic. The regional economic framework. And it feels like we just talked about it, but that was two weeks ago. And since then, it's been posted, the entire document in draft form for public comment, including an opportunity for us to go a little deeper into that work today. And I really is gratifying to see our partners, representatives from the Center for Economic Conclusion and Greater MSP. But kick it off is our own Michael Larson, senior planner, and who is going to help start the presentation. And we'll have a chance to ask questions, make comments. And we're looking on a pace to have this continuing to have reviews, including our Equity Advisory Committee, and ultimately come before this board to a council meeting in mid-August for final approval. But, Michael, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to you, to all of you councilmembers and guests. Michael Larson, senior planner in the Community Development Division. I hope you're not getting sick of my face. Thank you for joining me on this beautiful day and during what is a challenging time. Although I think I'm pretty excited about the milestone that we've reached in publishing a public draft of the regional economic framework that I'll go over with you today. So I wanted to, what I thought I would do is just, I'm going to acknowledge the partners that we have with us today and then go through a brief presentation of some of the highlights providing some structure for you perhaps to give some input onto the framework and what you see. And then ask our partners to join in in the conversation to share their perspectives and their share, again, their perspectives on this partnership that we've developed. So I want to acknowledge and welcome representatives from the Center for Economic Conclusion, Tawana Black, founder and CEO, as well as Andrea Forston, Vice President of Systems Innovation. Furthermore, we have, I believe we may have the entire leadership team from Greater MSP, which is pretty exciting. Peter Frosch, the Chief Executive Officer, Amanda Taylor, Vice President of Research, Matt Lewis, Vice President of Strategic Initiatives, Sidney Bickerstaff, VP of Operations, and Maggie Habashy, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, part of me, Maggie, Director of Communications. I also want to thank, I don't know if we've acknowledged publicly the support that we got from Maria Zimmerman from MZ Strategies, a consultant that was able to support us in this project through funding from, through the McKnight Foundation. So I wanted to thank her. She's been very, very helpful, as I'm sure others would attest to. And I also want to acknowledge a large number of staff from the organizations, including the council. It was a significant undertaking, at times challenging, but I think we've learned a lot from each other by leaning into this work. So again, I'll try to do a fairly quickly overview. I'm going to share my screen with you momentarily, and that should work. How's that looking? Do you see the title slide? It look good?
Looks good, Michael.
Thank you for that. I was like a little worried there. I didn't hear anything. Okay. So, you know, one of the things that I would like to address that came up at the last committee of the whole meeting was the ongoing work about clarifying our different roles and our commitment. This is a new partnership. And I think the issue of, we're kind of in a fast, we're at a fair, pretty fast pace. And we've brought in three different organizations, I think. We are continuing to clarify the roles of each organizations and their commitments to each other. And I have shown you this slide, which I don't want to suggest that it's oversimplifying the activities. Should I get the rest of you hear that? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, we have a Met Council meeting right now, but...
Lanaya, you're not on mute, so I just put that out.
Thank you for that. I'm sorry. So what I wanted to, what we wanted to do is kind of identify the areas where we all, each of the three organizations have different sets of responsibilities that are exclusive to, exclusive to each of us. And the obvious one is our role as a regional planning lead. And although we have somewhat different sets of responsibilities, we do have ones that are shared, that are shared across common values and interests to all of the organizations and our shared interest in building a competitive and inclusive economy. So we can come back to this slide if you're interested in dwelling on some of these points. But this was an exercise that we went through to sort of provide some additional clarification. And I think that clarification will evolve over time as we lean into this work. And I know, you know, I think from the last conversations, particularly interest and accountability from this work, that we have an accountability to really affect some structural change and see some progress, some meaningful progress around racial income and wealth gaps. And one of the interests is in ensuring that the EDA funding applications support that. So we have some ideas around that. And we've put, some of those are reflected in the letter that we sent, the letter that was jointly drafted by each of the three organizations. But having said that, I just want to remind councilmembers that this framework is intended to be for the entire region and all of the potential resources that may come to bear. So that's something that we can continue to talk about, the roles of the myriad of organizations and roles and strategies that are part of this, part of this process. So in my memo to you on Friday, I shared longer versions of some questions that I had hoped you could consider that would be helpful in reviewing the framework. So I'm just going to review these right quickly. We can come back to this slide if that would help with the conversation. First is, does the framework improve your understanding of the economy and our major issues in the economy? Does the framework express the right kind of commitment towards racial equity? Does the framework explain how the region can withstand or adapt to economic challenges? This is really getting at the concept of resiliency. Does the framework represent some most important and meaningful commitments? Framework is not intended to be a comprehensive inventory of everything that anyone in any organization might do, but it doesn't represent the ones that are really the drivers and the leading, will change the leading indicators. Does the framework identify the most relevant measures related to the strategic priorities? There's many things that we could measure. Are these the right ones to highlight? Does the framework explain the roles and partnerships, our different authorities, and how we're working together? Either through the framework or in the other means, like this presentation and the letter that was drafted earlier. So I wanted to give a little bit of overview, just to give you some, some content of the framework to chew on and discuss first what Greater MSP refers to our regional economy, sectors of strength. Financial services and insurance is a large and growing sector of the region, accounting for $34.9 billion in annual economic output. It's not a very diverse industry, though, however, with 85% of the workforce being white. The region's headquarters in business services sector is something that I think everyone is pretty well known, knows quite a bit about with 15 Fortune 500 companies, the world's largest private company, and 78,000 people employed in this sector. Advanced manufacturing and technology involves companies such as Medtronic, Honeywell, and 3M. It accounts for $37.7 billion in annual economic output, the largest sector in the region. Total employment is over 200,000 and includes jobs such as assemblers, fabricators, machinists, electromechanical assemblers, and industrial engineers. There are over 8,000 electromechanical assemblers in the region, and this is twice what the average concentration is for a region. Health and life sciences is related to and supported by our medical synergies with companies such as United Health Group, the medical device industry, and the influence, the regional influence of the Mayo Clinic. And the region is home to six of the 30 world's largest food and agriculture companies. Major employers in this sector include General Mills, Land and Lakes, Cargill, CHS, Ecolab, and Caribou Coffee. Jobs in this sector include food scientists and technologists, food science technicians, and biological engineers. An important part of developing this framework and a requirement of the Economic Development Administration is to do a SWOT analysis, which I'm sure most of you understand is refers to a strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And you'll see a synergy between the SWOT analysis and the nine strategic priorities for the region. So I want to go through these with you because I think it will help with the conversation. Some of our, and these are an inventory, there's a much, much larger inventory of the framework if you haven't had a chance to read it. So the region is known for its quality of life in various rankings, or really typically ranking near the top. We have a strong corporate presence and the leadership that could come with that. We have coordinated planning and infrastructure that is generally excellent. Our economy is diversified, and we can withstand shocks to one area or another. Our unemployment rate is low. And we all have education levels that are relatively high. And then we have a workforce development system that is fairly sophisticated. Having said that, we have, I'm sorry, and the number, the last one is here over my page, a couple more. I'm sorry about that. We have a high retention of migrants. In other words, when people do move here, if they have a reason to move here, they typically stay. And of course, we have the vibrancy that immigrant communities bring to our region. On the other hand, we have weaknesses and some pretty bad ones. We have significant racial disparities, some of the worst in the nation. From surveys that Greater MSP and others have done is that black, indigenous, and people of color often report negative experiences with being here. The perception of the climate here means it's hard to get people just to move here unless they are drawn by a specific employment opportunity. And a couple of things are lagging in our region compared to peers. New business formation and venture capital deployment. And we have workforce shortages because of these issues. We have strong economic fundamentals, but we have a hard time getting the workforce that we need. And that's exacerbated by racial disparities. And we have a part of us, getting into a little more detail, we have lack of alternative credentialing, which has been identified by experts in the workforce development field, that it's difficult for people who may have an alternative career path to, to see advancement that others do through traditional paths. And in some cases, from an infrastructure perspective, we have some issues related to industrial land access to freight and congestion that may occur. So I'm going to move over now to opportunities in the region. We have a pretty significant opportunity here. How we respond as a region to a dual crisis, a crisis of COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the killing of George Floyd and the racial unrest, civil unrest as a result. We also have an opportunity to capitalize in our, on our sectors of strength and where we've traditionally shown growth. We have an opportunity to reduce our workforce shortages and racial disparities at the same time by empowering and franchising a potential part of our workforce. We have institutions and economic leaders that have the capacity to make effective change. And we have this unique point in time where we have the opportunity to embrace and empower BIPOC businesses and entrepreneurs as part of our response. And we have emerging opportunities as we move forward towards a green economy. And some of that, those details, I encourage you to look at in the framework. We also have some pretty big threats. These are obvious ones, COVID-19 general impacts and what those are going to be in the short term or the long term. Those are still emerging. We have disproportionate impacts on BIPOC workers and businesses. And in many cases, sometimes the gains that have been made in the past and prior to other recessions, there have been disproportionate impacts, losing, losing ground that they've, they've made in the past. And we have slowing, a potential for slowing growth due to our talent shortage. We also have automation impacts and the needs for re-skilling. And some of these may be accelerated as a result of the pandemic and a move to greater automation. And we have, frankly, we have competition for more diverse and faster growing regions that may be more attractive to the kinds of workforce that we're trying to attract. So the next slide here, at the last meeting, I touched upon some of the, some of the nuances related to the nine strategic priorities in the framework. You know, and as you can tell, and hopefully as you read in the document, these are related to our region's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And we tended to recognize all of these are related to one another. It's really not possible to work on any one of these without due consideration of one or more of the others. And more prominently now, our regional image is associated with mostly negative events and most recently, a significant international negative event, the tragic killing of George Floyd. But perhaps one day, we, the region might be associated with being a region that is more authentically welcome and one that acknowledges its past with racism and aggressively works towards a more equitable future for all of us. So just quickly, our review timeline, we distributed the draft on July 9th, where today is the July 15th Committee of the Hall. We did, I had an opportunity to meet with the co-chairs of the Equity Advisory Committee on Monday. We are also going to be meeting with the chair again on Friday and plan to present, to recast this presentation with them on the 21st next week. Part of that discussion is to engage with them and how they think they could be helpful going forward on implementation of this framework and through the additional work that we're doing on equity and how that could be, how they can influence the work on the economic value atlas, which you've heard a little bit about before. So our public input review period goes through, we've asked for comments through the end of the month. So they give us a little time to process what will inevitably be a flurry of comments likely towards, towards the end of the month with recommended approval, what recommended changes as a result of that input and feedback prior to your meeting in August 12. So myself and Andrea and Amanda are the primary contacts for providing information on the framework. So you're welcome to contact either of us. Councilmembers, encourage you to contact me directly about suggestions for the framework. This really concludes my brief overview. So I encourage, let me, let us know how we can assist you in your role as policymakers and providing us feedback on this draft body of work. If I can't answer a question, it's, I may punt to or defer to my partners and the other organizations. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I note that there's already begun an ongoing conversation. I understand that councilmember Musse, who could not be with us tonight, but had an opportunity to talk to you, Mike, to give you his feedback, so...
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. It was very interesting. I'm happy to share that if others are interested.
And, and, and so I invite any, anybody to reach out, you know, in the next week or two, to any representative because in addition to this more formal, but group meeting. So I kind of open it up and maybe even if Tawana or Amanda, you'd like to add anything, or Andrea, that'd be fine. This is, we can consider this more of a conversation, not just a formal presentation and/or even formal comments.
Thank you, Chair Zelli and Michael for your presentation. I think we appreciated the feedback that we received after the presentation at the last meeting, as well as feedback since then, as well as an opportunity to be able to talk to the chairman and chair of the community, as Michael shared, and community members about this plan. And we recognize me to be able to be more specific, I can be very intentional, both about the roles of each of our three entities, in particular the role of the Met Council, but also what we can do together, not only in the creation of this plan, but what happens after the framework is created over the years to be able to be a more inclusive and equitable growth. Over the last week or so, we've been able to write and we're encouraged that the work that we do beyond this time is more impactful. So we look forward to it.
Well, and thank you, Tawana, for mentioning that. As Michael had said at the top of the meeting, we're also, will be looking toward our work in the economic value atlas with many partners, including Center for Economic Conclusion, but also Brookings and others. And all this, of course, leading up to, I'm not sure what we're calling it, Thrive 2.0, but our, kind of our, our ongoing, kind of more formal plan for the regional growth, which is, all these are, in a sense, building blocks toward. And I also encourage people to follow the links to read the whole document. It's, it's kind of an interesting exposition of our current economy, as you kind of highlighted in the PowerPoint, but more directly where our plans and where opportunities are going, going forward. And our opportunities, a way of saying, some of the areas we really need to solve, like the disparity issues. Councilmember Johnson, Judy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciate this information and all the hard work that people have put into this. I think there was, actually, I was booked in three different Zoom meetings today at the same time, and I couldn't get, wasn't there a meeting today on feedback? I thought, see, I was putting it out there and I appreciated that. And, and maybe this was touched on by Michael and I missed it, but how is gathering feedback going? And do we feel good about the voices and inclusiveness of, of gathering feedback as we move through this process? Michael, you want me to address that or?
I was going to start. We haven't had a lot of specific feedback. I have some ideas that councilmember Musse suggested, I think was in, very much in the realm of implementation in terms of being a more welcoming community. And I can get into that, articulate that a little bit, perhaps at another time. We haven't had, it's, it's just been a few, few working days, so we really haven't had very much. I think we have maybe one comment from a staff member in the head of the county. And we, we had some early input from tribal organizations on approaches that I think are well represented in the framework. But we will be documenting, as I think in, hopefully, our memo was clear about the approach that we'll take to documenting and how we're resolving the input that we get. So that we'll be transparent about that. But wait, I don't really have much. Amanda, do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, we've had, we had, as mentioned, a planning session this morning that we, that we hosted together, the three organizations. And we had about 40 people that attended, and there was a good mix of city, county representatives, nonprofit community organizations, tribal, tribal governments, really just a great mix. And we started to get some initial feedback, especially as it relates to consistency between the framework and funding opportunities through EDA. And so I think now that those partners who are interested in applying for funds, now that they are seeing the document, I think we're going to start to see some more input. I heard from Frank Jaskulke with Medical Ally Association, who, you know, is so pleased to see the representation of our wonderful sector of strength in life sciences here, represented in the document. So starting to get some early feedback that's pretty positive.
The only other, thank you, Amanda, for that. I love to hear about that. And for me, as we get to the council doing the final adoption, I, and I know this has been... And for me, as we get to the council doing the final adoption, I, and I know this has been a tight process and it's, it's the beginning of a longer process, right? We're trying to meet the cares or the EDA timeline on this. But, you know, try, and then, and it, and thank you, Michael, for, you know, referring to the document on our approach. But I just really think that if we're going to say it, we got to do it. And I really want this to be inclusive and reflect, you know, the perspectives of everybody who will benefit from the work. So thank you for your hard work, Amanda. I appreciate it and everybody else.
Any other thoughts?
Chair, this is Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson.
Please.
And I had my hand up, but I'm not sure that you can see it.
No, sorry, I missed it.
That, that's okay. Um, and this is just kind of, I thought I'd pop in because this is related to Councilmember Johnson's question. I think one of the other pieces that we need to talk about is what is the target for us that we feel good about in getting public comment, both from where, what communities, and also an N. So that at the end, we're not feeling like, well, to get to the concerns that Councilmember Johnson just mentioned around honest engagement. One of the things that I think can be helpful is how we educate and promote the pub, the public comment period and what it will mean for people to give public comment and how we'll respond back to that. I took an opportunity to just kind of review our website page around this. And I think we could maybe do a little bit more to help people understand, people want to know right now how to be engaged. But not many people are familiar with what public comment does, if it does anything at all. And so kind of thinking back to that great process or practice from the International Association of Public Participation, to have a really clear commitment about what will we do with the input we collect and commitment about how we're going to report back so that people know, one, why should they comment? Two, how will that comment be used? And three, how will they know that it had an impact, whatever that is? Does, doesn't mean we, not saying we commit to something specific, but we just need to be clear about that. And one of the pieces of feedback we often get is that, you know, 10 people commented, so what? And we checked the box, but that didn't really get to what we're really after, which is having people feel good and confident about the direction we're heading in. Those would also be tools that I think would help enable council members to be good champions for engagement on this as well.
Uh, Michael.
Yes, I wanted to respond, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson, that's very helpful feedback to get. I do think the, our web presence could be improved. I do think we can be clearer about kind of what we're looking for and how we will respond. But your points are well taken. I'm very familiar with the IAAPP continuum of, of public input and public engagement. So I do, I do, I do appreciate that and will certainly could run with that.
Rava.
Thank you, Chair. I would also like to request that I work with Michael and Linnea Atlas Ingabretson has also talked about this in the past on how we can be innovative in our approaches to community engagement. Each community has its different nuances and in terms of how they, how we can effectively engage with them. So I think this is a good time for us to kind of maybe sit down and put our heads together and come up with some ideas on, on our approach.
Yeah, the idea that you can't expect people just to find us. We need to go where people are. This is a simple idea. And I think, I think an alternative ways to engage is really important on this process.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll follow up with Michael.
Great. Any other comments on engagement or any substance?
Hey, if I may, this is Francisco.
Please.
Hi, I just want to comment that I appreciate Michael willingness to, to engage with the EAC, Nelima and I, and also the, the staff and the other partners in this project. I mean, we, we initially made some comments that we wanted more information and offer some suggestions and they jumped right into it and reached out to us. Both Nelima and I, and they were more than willing to have very, you know, open conversation about our concerns and our ideas. And I, I just want to say that I appreciate that willingness to engage with us. Yeah. And, and we are looking forward to continue to work with all of the partners at the EAC in this process. And like it was mentioned before, this is going to be a long haul, but hopefully we'll, we'll be able to support and to you know, make sure that community engagement is also part of this project. But again, thank you for your willingness to talk to us and your prompt response. Thank you.
Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And yeah, I, I think all of us are interested in authentically engaging the various stakeholders in our community. And I, I will, I will, I will add that we do have other ideas for communicating about the framework and its presence. As part of a overall communication strategy. So I mean to suggest we haven't thought about that, but you will see other types of material and about that. And we will certainly reach out to ensure that we're, we're getting input from the people that we would expect to get it from. And will be partners with us in this work over the, over the long haul.
Chair, this is Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson. I have one other um, question, question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that I think, and I, I don't know if other council members share this experience, but one of the things that's hard for me as a community member to see or hear, because we hear this all the time on public radio and or radio or, or news reports, when we report about our unemployment rate, it's always low in our state. But that is completely dependent on the population in the community you're in. So it feels very, so I understand that for the white population, unemployment rate is low. And for maybe portions of the Asian, certain ethnic groups from Asian community, unemployment may also be low. But when we disaggregate that data, we, that's where we see those huge disparities. And I think I feel, I would feel better about our SWAT analysis if it was explicit in pointing out those dualities. And I think that would also help the public understand that both of those things are true at the same time. And I think it is confusing when, in my work doing diversity, equity, inclusion work, it's really confusing for the public when they hear a dominant culture perspective of news all the time, reporting, we have really low unemployment rates. So then they're shocked or they don't believe or they don't understand when we talk about the employment rates in other ethnic groups being different. So I kind of just wonder about that a little bit. I don't know that that's so much of a question as a wonderment as to how we can start to get at unpacking the complexity, but also the truth, a full representational truth of what's, what's plaguing our community.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just add on to that. And, and I know this is the broad policy and we'll dig down into the goals and all of the things that we'll be working on. But the same is true for housing, health, education. You know, so overall Minnesota's been affordable, although we know that that is a challenge and that's why it's showing up. But not, 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 not for everybody. And there's a lot of decades of history on, on that. So I just want to echo what Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson is saying. And I think when we approach our opportunities and challenges, making sure that it comes across that we really understand to the greatest extent possible and embrace our challenges so that we can meet them to solve them is important as we message out and invite people that we might not expect to be partners in this, but need to be partners in this. So I, I just want to echo and support that and also what Councilmember Chambliss said.
This is really a great conversation. It really talks not just what the data is, but how we present it, how we talk about it and getting that language perspective understood. And it's, I love the, the words, it's a wonderment. It's like, it's not like there's an easy answer, but we need a lot of help in finding that, that message correctly. Yeah, thank you. The other Councilmember Venta.
I have one thought, and I don't want to dilute in any way what council members Atlas Ingabretson and Chambliss and Johnson have said. I would like to kind of maybe do an additional request for, for data and that has to do with age. Being on the council for an age-friendly Minnesota and being the aunt of a bunch of young adults. I'm seeing some stressors at both ends. And I'm sure that, that having disaggregated data that relates to both age as well as race would be really beneficial. But I think as our economy continues to to struggle and perhaps even teeter here at some point, even more than it is already. We've got two ends that are really going through a lot. And certainly a lot of people in, in between. And I don't want to diminish that at all, but being that we're hopefully doing a lot of this work for those future generations, I think it would be interesting to see age-related breakdowns as well as it relates to unemployment.
Chair, if I could, I'll, I, I'd like to support that as well. I think we have a, if folks are familiar with this issue that has been highlighted lately. Minnesota has a really odd and unique in the nation practice of preventing 18-year-olds and those under 18 from receiving unemployment insurance benefits at, from the federal government that is really impacting young people at a horrible time. And I think it really illustrates the gap in understanding because we have so many who have been able to have middle-class upbringings here or upper-class upbringings. They don't understand how a young, a family whose middle working class or lower income is dependent on their children being able to work to cover basic household expenses. And I think it's another way that in our very progressive state, we're seeing unintended consequences that are just based on just not being able to fathom how people who are working class or lower income make it day by day. And, and that definitely catches people at both ends of the spectrum, but definitely within the blue collar, lower income and, and poverty. And, and families impacted and feeling poverty as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else? Well, we have our work cut out for us, don't we? So I want to just give it a moment in case anybody has any collective thoughts, but I think this this line of conversation is really nuanced and important. And, and if you even want to follow up with individual conversations, I encourage everyone to do so. Michael?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that I've been listening carefully and appreciate what you're saying. If you haven't, I, I, we really tried to provide some breakdown of data in a meaningful way that may not have been represented ideally in this presentation today, especially around issues of, of unemployment, age breakdown. We do have some of that articulated in the framework. We've also tried to really provide a lot of links to other data sources. Other resources are really looked into these issues. So I think you can take different paths, hopefully, to get really kind of into some of the nuances of these, these issues, including how our harsher racial equities inequities can make it worse over time, given, given what we know about the demographic breakdown by age. So there's, there's some of that, there's some of that there and I encourage you to explore that. At your leisure.
And Mr. Chair. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for that, Michael. And, and I, I really appreciate the depth of data and research that between Greater MSPEAM at Council, CEI and others bring to bear. That's what I think the strength of all of this is going to be, that it, it, it is based in data. And I think that when we talk about the nuances that are kind of layers into the data, those nuances though are our future. Because when you look at the diversity and our growing diversity, if you look at our schools and the number of languages and beautiful children with all the backgrounds that they bring with them, you know, that's the future. So while we look at the numbers of today, you know, we all know where we're going as a region demographically. And, and so that's why I just, I really, I know we all are working on this, but I, I don't want to have to peel back too many layers to have a sentence or two about where our future lies. And I appreciate the comments that Tawana Black put in the chat that is kind of, I think, aimed at what, at least for me, where I was trying to go. So it's great that it's all in there. I, I just hope we can move a little bit into our narrative about, you know, again, embracing our challenges slash opportunities because the future is right now in the work.
Great comment. And I had, had a wonderful conversation with a state demographer and, you know, people talk about forecasting the future, you don't know. But actually, this is not that complicated. This is arithmetic. Was in third grade, was in sixth grade. Add the numbers. I mean, it's right there. Yeah, it's, it's very important for economic science. Well, I hate to dismiss you on such a beautiful day, but of course there's, there's that. Any other, any other thoughts?
Chair, um, this is Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson. I just wanted to, one thing, I meant, I heard Councilmember Johnson mention this. I was scheduled for two council meetings during this time today. So I just want to encourage staff to, to try and help us not double book council meetings. An MPOS meeting was scheduled for this time. And so I don't know if that's happening with other folks. Based on that triple booking that Councilmember Johnson mentioned, but maybe that was unrelated to council work. I don't know. But I just want to apologize to my MPOS commissioners about my absence, not being there. We're recording that meeting so I can also do a good job at representing that work to the CDC at our next meeting coming up. But I just want to acknowledge that that happened today. And we'll try and avoid that going further in the future. And also I apologize for the call I received earlier. There was an urgent council matter and I don't know if you want to mention that to other council members who might be getting some communications related to that in the near future.
Yeah, maybe. Thank you. And, and I appreciate your comment about the calendars we need to. Yeah, maybe. Thank you. And, uh, and I appreciate your comment about the calendars. Uh, we need to always be mindful of everybody's time. Um, and no problem with the phone call. I do think, since you just mentioned it, you might be getting calls, and it's in the news that we had a crane collapse in the Kalamazoo corridor, uh, an hour or so ago. So, um, that's, uh, our, our project. And, uh, no injuries and no, uh, property damage. Um, but in an abundance of caution, we've, uh, 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 brought out, uh, we evacuated a, a building and, uh, Minneapolis Fire Department's there and, uh, investigators are there. And, uh, um, but it's, uh, uh, we don't think that anything, uh, property damage or anything visible, but it's never good to have a large job site in a very, in a very, uh, narrow, uh, area of our city have a, um, have a crane fall down. So I just want, since everybody's here in the room, I, and you mentioned it, I think we can soon acknowledge. So you all may be getting calls. I, while we've been speaking, I've been getting texts and calls from our Councilmember Goodman, so, um, clearly I need to make a few follow-up calls here. But I, I think that, um, uh, the, the good news is it's people around it, but I just want you to be aware of. But longer term, and today, we also have this important work. So I want to thank everybody for being involved in this, and especially, uh, that, uh, to acknowledge that this is, uh, more work to be done before we adopt it in August. And that continuing work that we're doing toward the ongoing implementation and development. So this is always not a solid, uh, uh, just, uh, you know, something that gets published and done. This is an ongoing work and will continue to, to evolve. But getting it right is really important. Getting it right with the right part, partners, right input, this is, is equally important. So, uh, Michael or Tawana or Amanda, do you have anything you'd like to share or are we?
And, and you don't have to. Well, I mean, I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to be working on this during this, um, crazy time. And I've really appreciated the relationships I've built with both Greater MSP and the Center for Economic Conclusion. It's, um, it's been, uh, I think, a great opportunity. Uh, I wish the circumstances were different, but it feels like this is, this is important, meaningful work. And, uh, um, look forward to continuing to do that.
I agree. This is Amanda, and I, I think for Peter too, I'm sure, who, who was on the call, who may have had to drop. But, um, we just appreciate the, the collaborations, this achievement of, of working together on such an important document. It's been a great experience and we look forward to continued partnership.
Absolutely. I feel that as well. Um, always appreciate the feedback you all are providing and looking forward to being able to partner, um, to ensure that as many voices as possible that we do are engaged, um, not only in the creation, but also in implementation.
Okay, well, you know what? We have a call to action and, uh, we're gonna keep that momentum and keep it in front of us, right? So, uh, we'll all hold ourselves accountable to that. Um, thank you all. I think if there's no other further comments or questions, uh, I'm gonna call this committee the whole adjourned. I'm gonna make a few calls so that we know what our other projects are doing. And, uh, be well, be safe, and, uh, enjoy the afternoon. We'll see you all very soon. Thank you.